This is the July 13, 2021, meeting of the Town Plan and Zoning Commission for the town of Fairfield. First item on our agenda, Bills and Communications. The meeting minutes from June 22, 2021.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Francis, thank you, and second by Commissioner Braun. Thank you both. Commissioner Francis, any comments or questions on those?
No, I don't.
Very good. I didn't see anything either. It looked good. Anyone else have any comments or questions on the minutes? Okay, all those in favor, say aye or raise your hand. Aye. Oh, I'm sorry, I did it again. Commissioner Di Giacomo, you are sitting in for Commissioner Bremen. And you're up, you were here at the last meeting, so you're all good.
All right. Yes.
Excellent, thanks. Commissioner Francis with a yes vote. All in favor, say aye or raise your hand. Very good, and any opposed? None and no abstentions, the minutes are adopted unanimously. Next is new applications for recommended for public hearing. The first is 2780 Reading Road, re-subdivision application of John G. Russell for two lots and a AAA zone. Ms. Harrigan?
I actually don't have any description that was left for me on that one. I think it's as straightforward as it sounds. That they're just, you know, re-subdiving that site into two separate lots, so, you know, the assumption is that these are going to be two, two-acre parcels.
Okay, sounds good, and a public hearing is required. Commissioner Noonan, move to approve to public hearing?
Move to public hearing.
Second by Commissioner Corcoran, thank you. Anyone else have any other comments or questions? We don't have a lot of info on this, but moving, it's appropriate to move to public hearing. All in favor, say aye or raise your hand. Aye. Commissioner Francis?
Yes.
Any opposed? And any abstentions? So that is unanimously moved to public hearing. Next is 40 Hillside Road, a zone change application of 40 Hillside LLC to establish a neighborhood design district on land presently zoned residence double A.
So this property presently is the former, a former church use, and it is being, it is residentially zoned presently, and they are looking to rezone in order to open a veterinary hospital. The, I believe the footprint of the building is a bit larger than the, than the prior church use, but from what we've seen from the preliminary plans, it meets all of the requirements, but you'll get to see that when it goes to public hearing.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Commissioner Noonan, move to public hearing? Very good. Second by Commissioner Braun, thank you both. Any questions or comments on this one? None? Okay, looking for hands. Commissioner Levy? You just wanted to raise your hand? You just testing me? Very good. All right, all those in favor, say aye or raise your hand?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Francis. And any abstention, any oppose? Any abstentions? All right, so that's moved to public hearing unanimously as well. Oh, should have called this one together, but it's 40 Hillside Road Special Permit Application of 40 Hillside LLC pertaining to the construction of a veterinary hospital. So this is the special permit application that goes along with the zone change application that we just moved to public hearing. Moved to public hearing by Commissioner Noonan, second by Commissioner Corcoran, thank you. I presume we had no question on the last one. I don't have anything to add here. A public hearing is required for the special permit. All in favor, say aye or raise your hands?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Francis. Any opposed? None, no abstentions. And so that is moved to public hearing unanimously. Okay, old business. First is 45 Sherman Street, Special Permit Application of 45 Sherman Street LLC for a second-floor dormer addition for an existing commercial building in the Center Design District. Public hearing 622 and 826. 826. No, expires 826, got it. Ms. Harrigan?
Yes, so 45 Sherman Street. If you can recall from the applicant's presentation, there are two buildings on this property. The front building, which was originally a residence, has an office use on the first floor with a residential unit above. The detached garage has been previously approved for office as well. The proposal is to dormer the second floor of the former garage to add 300 square feet to the second floor. The ZBA approved a variance for rear and side setback relief for the proposed dormers. And a parking variance was also approved to grant relief to reduce the parking count by two spaces for the, the additional square footage that would have otherwise required. There are five parking spaces on site. And that addition is really just to accommodate the, the pre-existing office use that's there.
Okay. Thank you very much. Commissioner Braun? Motion to approve? Can't hear you, you're on mute.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Can I have a second? Commissioner Levy, seconded by Commissioner Levy, thank you. Commissioner Braun, you want to start?
Yeah, we had quite a bit of discussion last time. Certainly, the neighbors don't object. I believe Attorney Fallon is the closest neighbor. But it seems like a very good repurposing of this to bring it to full use as an office. And I don't think it would be harmful at all to the neighborhood or the traffic or anything else. I think there were questions answered about parking and things like that. So I, I think it's a very good, good project to repurpose this building and add the two dormers.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Levy? You're on mute.
Yeah, they're basically continuing the existing use post-pandemic. It's likely to have no impact in terms of parking or additional traffic or congestion in the neighborhood. So I would approve.
Very good. Thank you for your comment. Anyone else? I, I agree. It seems, I mean, particularly with the, the variances that have been obtained. It otherwise meets our regulations. So there is really no, no basis for, to, to deny this application. And I also agree with the other comments that it, it won't have any impact to the neighbors and such. All right, very good. If there are no other comments or questions, we're ready to vote. Motion to approve, all in favor, say aye or raise your hands?
Aye.
Commissioner Francis?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? No, because we all voted in the affirmative. Any abstentions? None. This application is approved unanimously. Next is 38 Beaumont Street. It's a zone change application of AAP Builders LLC to establish a residence B zone on a portion of property presently zoned design commercial district.
For 38 Beaumont Street, the, the parcel is actually split zoned with a portion of the site, as you mentioned, in the commercial district, and a portion of the site in the Residence B zone. There is presently a single-family dwelling on the site. And the applicant is seeking to make the entire site Residence B by making the zone line coincident with the property line. The present zone line was established by a line 200 feet parallel to and southerly of the Post Road and did not take property lines into account. It should be noted that in 2007, the commission denied an application made by the adjacent commercial property owner for a zone change to make the entire parcel design commercial district to expand the adjacent parking lot. The board, the commission should understand that considerations for a zone change need to contemplate the following. Number one, is the proposal consistent with the plan of conservation and development? Number two, does time, experience, and responsible planning for contemporary or future conditions reasonably indicate the need for the proposed zone change? Three, have circumstances in the neighborhood changed substantially to warrant the requested zone change? Four, has it been demonstrated that the proposal is warranted and would serve the general health, welfare, and safety of the town? Five, does proposed zone change promote a level of development that would serve to protect property values in the neighborhood and enhance the community and accomplish a transition in character between areas of unlike character? And six, would the proposed zone change permit a level of development that would increase undue traffic congestion? Those are the items that need to be considered in terms of deciding on the zoning map change.
Very good, thank you very much. Commissioner Braun? You're the first with your hand up.
I, I have a couple of questions. I know last time I asked-
Motion on the table, can we get a motion on the table before we get into questions and debate? Do you have a motion?
No, I don't have a motion.
Okay, does anyone have a motion to to approve or deny? Commissioner Noonan?
Make a motion to approve?
Thank you. Motion to approve by Commissioner Noonan. Second by Commissioner Levy. Thank you. Now we can get into some question and debate. I mean, Commissioner Noonan, would you like to begin?
I'll just point out the fact that I think it's generally- Can you hear me?
I can. I mean, you don't have to start, you can-
I, I'll just point out the fact that- Yeah, I'll defer to Commissioner Braun. I just would point out the fact that we generally prefer the property to have, be of the same zone, the entire property itself, which is hence the somewhat the basis of my, general, my approval. But I'll defer to Commissioner Braun for questions.
Commissioner Braun?
Okay, so I, I had a question for Mr. Went. Is this the, the means of egress for that ORP Street development, that large condominium development that we approved a year or so ago?
No, this is, this is, no, this is not near there. I, I'll speak to the, the prior application that we denied to make it, you know, full commercial as opposed to this one, make this one full, full residential. So the basic reason for denying the prior application was because the neighbors complained about encroachment of commercial. Right? So there's a difference between making the rest of a residential parcel commercial in residential neighborhood, you know, on a, on a bridge, then making a residential, you know, fully residential in, in the adjacent parcel from commercial into residential area. So the neighbors actually objected in the prior application that referenced to the application to the zone change to make it fully commercial and for an expansion of a parking lot. Here, I don't believe we had any opposition at all, neighbors. I think that frankly, each of our considerations under the zone change that Ms. Harrigan recited, I think can be answered in the affirmative with respect to this application. It is consistent with the plan of conservation and development to unite parcels under a single zone, right? The POCD actually speaks to, you know, rectifying split parcels. I think time and experience, to me, from being on the commission for more than a decade, indicates a need for the zone change. In, because the parcel is split, these things create a lot of problems for the landowner as well as the town and the adjoining neighbors and such. And I think responsible planning does indicate that, you know, there's a need for this zone change to harmonize the entire parcel under one, under a single zone. I don't think that the circumstance in the neighborhood haven't changed. I don't think number three really plays, comes into play. Number four, serve the general health, welfare, safety of the town, I think is also kind of, you know, not particularly relevant. This is a residential parcel. They're seeking to convert the commercial zone area to residential so that they can have a a fully unified, residentially zoned parcel for residential use. So I mean, in that sense, I think it's, you know, it supports four, but we're not really. It's not even, number five is, does the zone change promote a level of development that would serve to protect property values and such? I think the answer is yes, because it harmonizes the residential zone for this parcel for use as a residential property. It is in character, you know, with the surrounding parcels because they too are residential. It's not increasing, you know, undue traffic congestion and so forth. I mean, this is really to, to clean up what otherwise was a sloppy development of the particular commercial zone arbitrarily drawing a line 200 feet south of the Post Road without taking into account, you know, any of the parcels. And it really has caused substantial problems in the administration of, of our applications along the Post Road corridor. When you think about the ill-fated Walgreens application in Southport where, you know, they had to wrestle and battle with the neighbors on the one hand who said, no, no, it's zoned residential, it shouldn't be a commercial use. And then, you know, with the commercial folks who said, what do you mean? It's, half of it is zoned commercial. Of course it should be, you know, a commercial use. And that land today is undeveloped. Because even though we approved the application, the neighbors opposed it on those grounds and took appeals and so forth. So I, I think that it is important that we pay attention to these applications and we consider them very, very carefully. In this circumstance, I think this is ripe for approval. The, the owner of the land who's using it as a residential property is seeking to unify this under a single residential zone to continue the use that they've enjoyed for years. And I think that probably impacts their, you know, financing and mortgaging and all that kind of stuff. So I would strongly encourage all of us to approve this application. Does that answer many of your questions, Commissioner Braun?
Yes, I had one follow-up, which I think you or Mr. Went will probably agree with me. My biggest concern was that this could be maxed out as an eight dash thirty G, but eight dash thirty G wouldn't require a zone change anyway, so all of the conversation we're having would be moot anyway. So that concern is not really there anymore. So, thanks.
You are correct. They could do it today if they wanted to. Yeah.
I apologize for my latest.
No, no, welcome, welcome. So since we began here, I think Commissioner Di Giacomo should finish this one out. We're on, on Beaumont, okay? Any other questions or comments? I'm sorry, I kind of jumped in there, but I thought that would, it'd be helpful to just outline those things. Okay. Are we ready to vote? The motion is to approve. Okay, all those in favor, say aye or raise your hand?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? None and no abstentions, so this application is, is approved unanimously. The, the next item is our public hearing. For folks, residents who have come to speak, please indicate if you'd like to speak on any particular item in the chat. We'll take people first come, first served as they sign up, but I'll also make a call for anyone who wants to be heard. The way that we do this is we first have the applicant's presentation. Then we move to public comment on that particular application. When everybody is done, we go back to the applicant for a rebuttal. The applicant has the last word and will close the public hearing on that particular item, and then we'll move forward to the next one. And we have three items on for public hearing this evening. The first is 323 Old Dam Road Special Exception and Coastal Site Plan Application of Esplanade LLC pertaining to the construction of a single-family dwelling in the Flood Plain District. I think that's Attorney Fallon, yes?
It is indeed. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, my name is John Fallon. I'm, I'm pleased to be representing the applicant tonight. With me, should you have any questions, is from our architects' office, Krista Willett from Wayne, Wayne Achilles Architects and Mr. Mike Petula from Huntington Company. Now, the property is located in the Flood Plain District. I'll talk a little bit more about the Flood Plain District, obviously momentarily. But suffice it to say, it allows residential use under certain circumstances, provided that the standards of the R2 zone are applied. The property history here is that this was purchased by the family that comprises Esplanade LLC in 1963. At the time they purchased the property, it was zoned Residence B. There was an existing house on the property and that was demolished in 1980, 1997. It's a rather large parcel. It constitutes 58,400 square feet or 1.34 acres. However, as of 2011, and based upon FEMA regulations that then existed, the one-year title line was established at elevation 4.8, which meant that only 3,250 square feet of the property was buildable. The family moved forward at that time with an application seeking variances in order to build a single-family home and also to obtain a CAM site plan approval. And in October 2011, the Zoning Board of Appeals did in fact grant variances. They granted a variance for coverage to allow a coverage of 24.5%. They allowed a variance for FAR to allow a FAR of 45%. They granted a street line setback variance to allow a street setback of 16 feet. And they granted a variance to allow the minimum floor area to be 696 feet instead of 800 square feet. They also approved the CAM application that was made at that time. In January of 2014, after neighbors had taken an appeal of those variances that were granted, the court dismissed the appeal and upheld the action of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Due to family circumstances and other factors, they did not at that time move forward with the special exception to actually construct the residence that's required because the property, as I said, is in the Flood Plain Zone. You'll note, based upon the current application and the survey submitted by the Huntington Company, that at this point in time in 2021, the one-year title floodline is established at section 3.7 feet. That is due to the fact that in 19, in 2013, FEMA adopted NAVD 1988, which does in fact establish the one-year title floodline at 3.7 feet, replacing the previously existing NGVD 1929 standard. So basically what happened was that that one-year title floodline, based upon FEMA action in 2013, was reduced by a foot. That's important here because it then establishes that this lot now, based upon that standard, has 9,153 square feet. And what that means is that the variances that were approved both by the ZBA and judicially and have been recorded on the land records and run with the land that were granted for coverage is no longer required. The coverage that's proposed with regard to this single-family home is 8.5%, well within the 15% standard of the R2 zone. And similarly, the FAR is well within the 30% standard of the R2 zone, constituting 17.3%. The two variances that are still viable to this application is the minimum ground floor area, because that square footage will be 696 square feet. And so that that variance of section 5.2.6 is still valid. And section 5.2.4 with regard to the street line. Although the ZBA and court approval established the street line at 16 feet, the current proposal requires only 17.3 feet. So this is an application, as I said before, that's brought to you under the Flood Plain District Regulations. Section 23.6 is the controlling regulation. And it permits the establishment of any uses in the Flood Plain that are permitted under, in the R2 zone, provided that it conforms to the Flood Plain District Regulations, which I'll talk about momentarily, and to the standards of section 27 for special exceptions. Obviously, in this case, a single-family residence is a permitted use in the R2 zone. And the, and the proposal is compliant with the standards of section 27.4. 27.4.1, it's important that a single-family house is a permitted use in the zone. It's consistent with other uses of single-family homes in the neighborhood and is designed by Mr. Achilles and Ms. Willett. It's an attractive structure. It's modest. It complies with, as I said, the coverage and FAR standards of the R2 zone. And the variances that previously were granted are no longer required. Section 27.4.2 references fire protection. Here, as I said, a single-family home is permitted. The application has been reviewed by town departments. And there certainly is no adverse impact there. Section 27.4.3 requires that you consider streets and traffic. I would submit to you, a single-family home won't have any adverse impact for traffic. And indeed, as I said before, there was a home established for many, many decades on this property up until 1997. Section 27.4.5, that you have to find that what is proposed is in conformity with the master plan. Obviously, a single-family home, as I said, is a permitted use in the R2 zone, so that issue is, I think, well handled. The current application, obviously, is for a special exception under section 23.6. It also seeks the CAM approval, which is expired. So we have to reapply for that. In that regard, you have a report from Environmental Land Solutions that was revised to May 11, 2021, which addresses the matter in terms of consistency with all applicable resources and use policies of the Coastal Area Management Act, Connecticut General Statutes 22A90 and 22A112. This application has been carefully reviewed by Ms. Harrigan to ensure compliance with all requirements with regard to FEMA and also of your own flood protection regulations set forth in section 32. I want to thank her for her time and assistance. She made certain suggestions to ensure that the architectural design was fully compliant, both in the letter and spirit with the FEMA regulations and the flood protection regulations. And in fact, that is what is before you tonight. So basically, this is an application that seeks approval in the Flood Plain District pursuant to section 23.6 of a single-family residence. The residence as proposed complies with all FEMA standards, all standards of the Coastal Area Management Act, and all standards of your flood protection regulations in section 32. So we'd be pleased to answer any questions you might have, but we would hope you would favorably consider this application so the family can reestablish a single-family home, as I said, compliant in all respects as far as FAR coverage on this property. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Do any members of the commission have any questions for Mr. Fallon about this application? I don't see any hands. Commissioner Francis, I don't see you. You, you all good?
Yes.
Very good. Okay. I don't have any questions at this time. So Ms., Attorney Fallon? All good then?
All good for now, Ms. Chairman, unless anybody in the public has questions or anything I need to respond to.
Very good. Thank you. So we'll move on this application. We'll move to a public comment. Ms. Harrigan, is there anyone who's signed up in the chat to speak on this?
Yes, we have two members of the public that would like to speak. We have Adam Allen followed by Mike Ginley.
Okay. Mr. Allen, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Commissioner Chairman and commissioners for allowing us to speak on behalf of our objection to the 323 Old Dam Road application. We sent a, there was a letter that was sent to the commission today on behalf of various neighbors that you should have received early this afternoon. We are requesting- We are requesting that the comment period be remained open. We were retaining Attorney Joel Green to represent our objections, and he is out of town until the 14th. So we would like respectfully request that you indulge us on holding on this application. We have objections in relation to the application not meeting the criteria in section 27. We also believe that it does not conform to the town master plan for floodplain construction. And we also believe there are inconsistencies with the CAM report with coastal resource use.
Okay. This is a bit out of the ordinary. So first of all, Ms. Harrigan, I don't recall seeing a copy of this letter that Mr. Allen speaks of. Do you have a copy of that letter?
The first letter.
Let me, let me, Mr. Allen, let me just, let me just hear with Ms. Harrigan first, okay? Thank you.
I guess, I guess the question is, what time was that letter sent? Because I don't, I don't have anything from, I don't have anything that shows that I received anything forwarded from Mr. Went, who is on vacation but checking his email and forwarding everything related to the commission's activity. I don't show that anything had come in. So I guess the question is, what time did that request, what time was that request sent?
I'm looking for that right now. The email was sent by Sarah Flocus, a neighbor of ours, at 1:36 PM to the TPZ Commission at FairfieldCT.org.
Jim had forwarded a series of different emails after that time, and I don't have that as part of it.
A series of emails not relating to business this evening?
Not related to that particular item. I have emails related to a later public hearing item.
Did you, now we're getting a little bit off track here, but did you circulate those to the commission?
I did not. I can certainly do that now. Those did not come in until after 5 o'clock.
Okay. Can, while, while I now engage on this, can you please circulate those other ones to the, to the commissioners, please?
Yes.
Mr. Allen, how many neighbors do you represent?
There are 17 neighbors who signed a petition that was sent later on in the, around 5:45. I also sent that same letter that was sent by Ms. Flocus at 1:36. I sent mine at 2:28. And other neighbors also sent the exact same letter.
Okay.
What we're asking for is for to have representation in two weeks' time.
Right, I understand that. You also, you're representing that there was a petition that was submitted, signed by 17 neighbors?
16 or 17 were on it when I, when we finally sent it.
What is the, what is the substance of the position, of the petition? Is the petition simply asking for an extension of time, or is it for a substantive issue?
It is for the substantive issues to be discussed, that we would like our attorney to be representing, because we don't believe that we are versed in the process well enough to do so ourselves.
Understood. Okay. So I don't have any of those materials presently, and I, and they're still not in my box. And on that basis, I don't think any, any other commissioner has them. If they did, I would. Mr. Fallon, Attorney Fallon?
Yes, sir.
In the first instance here, do you have any objection to us leaving the public hearing open and continuing this to a future meeting to allow the neighbors to gain their counsel?
Respectfully, I do, and I'll speak to it. This application was filed on May 11th. It has been pending for nine weeks. I am well understanding and agree and commend the commission, that we always want in these proceedings to balance fairness to the members of the public, but I know the commission is also mindful that they want to balance fairness to the applicant. I do not mean to speak for Mr. Green in any way, shape, or form, but I will represent that I spoke to him this morning on other matters, and this item came up, and he did not indicate to me that he had been yet retained. And I also would point out that you haven't received any letter from Mr. Green, so that if he had been retained, even today, as we all know, Mr. Green or any other attorney would have written you a letter and saying he has been retained, and he's out of town, et cetera, et cetera. So what we have here is a situation where these neighbors have waited nine weeks, and even as of today, the attorney that they indicate they are, have employed, respectfully, he may be employed in the future, I don't know, but he's not as employed as of tonight. And I think that balances strongly, especially with a matter that I think is as straightforward as this. In terms of balancing the equities here and saying, you know, we owe some due process, some reasonable fairness to the applicant as well. I don't think they've acted diligently here. I think they could have had a great deal of time to engage an attorney, or if they'd engaged an attorney even as late as today, have that attorney of record request an extension, which might put me in a different light as far as my position. But at this point in time, I think we should, you know, we should move forward. If they have concerns, if they have questions, let them address them, and then we'll respond. Whatever the commission does, I respect.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. You have to understand that one aspect of this that is troubling to me is that I have representation that there have been letters and a petition and other materials that were submitted earlier today that never made it to us. And you haven't seen them either. And so it's difficult to, to comment or to, to react to what you haven't seen. And, and that wrinkle is, you know, in part because we have staff who are on vacation. He's noticed, noticed that Mr. Went is, is not here, and so we tried to accommodate his, his absence. And, you know, I don't doubt, Mr. Allen, that those materials were emailed or an attempt to, to email them, and so that, it places us in a bit of an awkward position. Had I seen those materials, there would have been different questions. Can you answer the question as to whether Mr. Green has, has been retained by you and your group of neighbors? Or is this still in, you know, a consultant, you know, you're still consulting with him?
Mr. Green, we are in the process of retaining him. He is unfortunately in Maine. We, he has spoken with us today. Again, we spoke to him once last week. Fortunately, we were out of town last week on vacation. And respectfully, Attorney Fallon, no one in the neighborhood received notice until two weeks ago. So your May date, unfortunately, we don't keep searching to see if items are being posted for hearings. So the mailings were sent out less than two weeks ago. So we are, we have scrambled to retain Mr. Green. He has read the letter that we sent. He was the one who suggested that we would go ahead and deliver this letter and, and by email, and for us to attend today in his absence, asking for a two-week, the comment period to be left open for two weeks.
I defer to the commission.
Okay. Let's, let's do this. Why don't we, how many, now I, how many other people are signing up to speak on this now, Ms. Harrigan?
I don't believe that, let's see, I think that only, I believe that only Mr. McGinley has indicated that he wants to speak.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, let's hear from Mr. McGinley, and then we can decide on what to do here.
Oh, sorry, Mr. McGinley.
Excuse me. Can you hear me?
Yes, is that, I'm sorry, is that Ms. McGinley?
No, it's Sarah Flocus. I'm using Christina Taylor's computer because mine did not work. So I, I did.
I'm sorry. We just, we just called for Mr. Ginley, who signed up to speak on the application. You can certainly speak, and I'll call on you in a proper order, but Mr. McGinley is, I believe, ahead of you. Mr. McGinley?
Sorry, I think it's Mr. Ginley.
Ginley, I'm, okay, Mr. Ginley?
I think I was on mute. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, okay, great. Yes, I, I'll just go quickly. I, I would just like to reiterate what, what Adam had said. We did not know about this nine weeks ago. We only recently found out about it and organized ourselves to reengage with Attorney Joel Green. He has reviewed things with us, reviewed old files, and is planning to, to pick this up when he returns from vacation. He did not see there'd be any issue in asking you guys to respectively, respectfully delay comment to the next meeting, which I believe is July 27th. As Mr. Fallon said, the applicant has been in no rush to do this, and I don't see why the board should feel any pressure or rush to decide this now. The variances, Mr., you know, Mr. Fallon said the variances don't have to be obtained because the lot has changed, but some of them do. So it's not, it's not completely accurate to say that the variances don't even need to be obtained now. Some, because some do. The property's changed. We just want to know what the plans are, and are they, if the plans have changed, and just asking to, you'll be allowed to let our 17 neighbors have representation in front of you on, on a date in a few weeks.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Ms. Flocus?
Yes, thank you very much. I wanted to reiterate what Mike Ginley and Adam Allen have just said. We only recently were notified, less than two weeks ago, by letter by the TPZ. So we were scrambling. People were on vacation. We have a lot of substantive issues that we need to discuss. Mr. Fallon is a lawyer, an attorney, and we should be allowed to be represented by an attorney also. We, there are certain things that he said, which I believe should be corrected. I've lived on this street since 1981, so I have a personal history with the street. I know that the Epifanos and Mr. Costa really never lived here. It was a rental property when I moved in, in 81, and the people left a couple years later. The house was abandoned for over 30 years. At first, only animals were living in it, and then I believe the town requested that the Epifano company demolish it because it was a health hazard. So, you know, there are some misleading statements made here that, that the, the house was not historically a family-owned house. So I, I do think there's, you know, many issues that we need to bring up, and all of the hazards that the construction of this house would, would involve the fact that some parts of this street, in fact, right above where the house is proposed, is only 12 feet in width. So we, you know, we need to present all this information, and it is not in compliance with the Fairfield Town Plan. The Town Plan states that we're trying to decrease density in the floodplain, and this would certainly do the opposite by increasing it. So, you know, we have a lot to say. I think it would only be fair to the residents to have a hearing, and a hearing where we could present our attorney. We discussed the fees with the attorney. We accept them. It was a verbal agreement that he was going to represent us. It's not in writing, I admit, but a verbal agreement has been made with Joel Green. Thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you very much. Any other members of the public wish to be heard on this item? Okay. So, Ms. Harrigan, Attorney Fallon, what are the timelines, the deadlines, statutory deadlines on this application?
I defer to Ms. Harrigan on that.
Sorry, let me just pull up a calendar real quick.
Okay, thank you.
We, we unfortunately would need an extension from the applicant.
If, it, it's, listen, the commission knows me well enough. I spoke my mind in terms of the extension. I still feel that way, but if the commission determines that it's going to continue this matter, quite obviously, I'll cooperate with the commission in that regard, with regard to any extension that's required.
All right. I mean, I guess, I guess an extent, so if we, so we have to complete the hearing within 35 days. So if the hearing is tonight, then we would certainly have the availability to put it on for the meeting on the 27th.
To complete the hearing within the deadlines, yeah? Okay, all right. And I appreciate that, Attorney Fallon. And I, I understand, I understand your, your position and perspective, and I appreciate it, and I also appreciate the way that you've articulated. So here's where my, my, my gut comes out on this. I'm sensitive to the neighbors. I'm sensitive to the timeline. I understand this has been in, as you outlined in your narrative, something that's been in the works for, you know, many, many years. I understand that it's the summer, and that neighbors are not scouring the records of the TPZ, looking for applications as they're filed. They rely on, you know, these written notices that are mailed. I understand, and I don't doubt those who've spoken or, or, you know, allegedly emailed, that they only received notice, you know, less than two weeks ago. I have no reason to doubt their representations as to their correspondence with Attorney Green and the intended representation. And, you know, I'm inclined to continue the hearing and carry this over until the 27th. But I'd like to hear from any commissioners as to whether anyone has a, a, a feeling which is different than as I've just articulated. which is different than as I've just articulated. So if anyone has a different idea on this, then speak now, please. Raise your hand or say something. Okay, so I don't see anyone. I don't hear anyone. With that and your comments, Attorney Fallon, you know, with respect to the applicant, I'm going to continue the public hearing here and give the neighbors an opportunity to engage Attorney Green. I will tell everyone that this is the only continuation that I'm inclined to grant here. This is at the 11th hour, and in part, I have to also say that this is in part because the neighbors, you know, are telling us that they did submit these materials earlier today. Quite a few, which we didn't receive. And had I received them earlier today, I would have been able to engage on these very matters earlier than after the fact. And it was quite surprising to me. So this is very, quite out of the ordinary. So let's continue the hearing for one session. It's two weeks. July 27. Mr. Alum, Mr. Ginley, Ms. Flocus, please communicate to Attorney Green that what I've just said, and ensure that you all are ready to go on the 27th, so that we don't have any other undue delay, quite frankly, to the prejudice of the applicant, who is gracious in their comments and also consenting to the continuance. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, very good. Thank you, Attorney Fallon. And with that, I will continue and adjourn the public hearing on this item. The next item is 1073 North Benson Road, special exception application of Fairfield University, pertaining to the conversion of a former student infirmary to student housing within an existing building in the double A zone.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Again, for the record, my name is John Fallon, members of the commission. I'm representing Fairfield University. I'll try to be short and sweet. This application seeks your approval for internal renovations in order to convert the interior space that was previously occupied by the university's infirmary at the John C. Dolan Hall into an area of student housing constituting 22 beds. Dolan Hall, just to put it in context, is a 70,200 square feet building. The old infirmary area that would be subject to this conversion is 6,000 square feet, so it's modest. But as I'll speak to in a moment, these beds are important to us based upon circumstances that have developed. This comes about because, as you'll remember, in November of 2019, you granted approval of the construction of a new university wellness center adjacent to the existing Jokes Hall. That facility has been constructed and it's now occupied and functioning. So we do have this vacant space, and that vacant space becomes important to us because, good news, bad news, the university has experienced a higher-than-normal acceptance rates from students who were granted admission for the 2021-2022 year. I say good news, obviously, because that speaks very well to the university and its continuing excellent reputation. The bad news is it's caused some strain in terms of our ability and desire to provide the on-campus student housing that we are wanting to provide in light of our contemplated enrollment. So this request simply will allow us to make that interior renovation of this small area in order to allow that now vacant infirmary space to add 22 much-needed beds to address that shortage. So that's basically it in a nutshell. And we talked about this, Mr. Wenton, and it was felt appropriate that because, you know, arguably is a change of use from one university function to another, it should come before you. But it does involve only 6,000 square feet and 22 beds, but those are important to us at this point.
Yeah, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. So the change in use is from infirmary to student housing. And one of the, you know, I think, major issues, sensitivities of the community, neighbors, and residents of the town have been to the enrollments and the location of students, whether it's down at the beach area or on campus and so forth.
Right.
Is the enrollment of the university expanding? Is that growing? Is that intended to be a permanent thing? Or, you know, maybe you could speak a little bit about that?
It's a good question that you bring up, and I think what I would say to you is this application, which involves these 22 beds, grows out of a sort of emergency need based upon the higher-than-expected acceptance rates of those admissions. The question that you raise is one that we're going to comprehensively address. We have now pending an application before you with regard, it's actually not before you now, but it was just approved by conservation, and it will be shortly, to add some significant additional student housing in the townhouse area. And we fully expect, and we would commit to you, that at the time that we come in with that application, it's incumbent on us to lead with, as part of our presentation, an overview of how the university sees its growth over the next decade or so, which will directly address the question you'll have. So we're not really prepared to do that tonight, because this focuses on 22 beds, which will just help us deal with a crunch. But we will have a vehicle coming to you as soon as later this month, and probably a public hearing in August or September, where we're going to talk about, you know, a more significant increase in on-campus housing. And at that time, we'll be prepared to address in detail the data and facts that would be pertinent to your question, which is a very important.
Okay, very good. And, you know, admittedly, in the grand scheme of things, 22 beds is kind of de minimis in the overall picture. And so.
And we do have student housing there now in Dolan, so it's not like we're introducing student housing into an area of the campus where it isn't already there.
How about parking? Yes, Commissioner Francis, just give me one moment. How about parking?
Yes, we basically have been able to convert, I think the number, I have it in my file, but it's either 10 or 13 spaces that were used for the infirmary use. They'll now be dedicated to those student beds.
So approximately one space per, half a space per unit?
Yeah.
Half a space per bed?
Correct. I believe it's 10, I can, it's 10 or 12 spaces, yes.
Okay. Do these students that are likely to be assigned to these beds, are they permitted to have cars on campus?
I can't, I'm not sure what we, I'm not sure which students will be, you know, whether the upperclassmen or underclassmen, so I don't know the answer to that. But I do know, as you know, if you know that area, in addition to the spaces that we're going to dedicate to this increase in parking, there is very substantial parking in that area of the campus that services both the existing student residences in Dolan and also in the existing townhouses. So I think you're familiar with the parking lot.
Yes, and so the representation is that, you know, there's no problem with parking, and it shouldn't be an issue with the conversion here of these beds. Okay.
That's correct.
All right, Commissioner Francis?
One question. Is this map a little older? Like, was that proposed three-story building? Maybe that's the dorm you built two years ago for Ignation?
I don't have the map in front of me, so I can't answer that if we want to put the map up.
Which page are you looking at, Commissioner Francis?
I think it was near the end. It was over near the old dorms, Gonzaga, Canisius. Behind that, it says proposed three-story dorm.
Yeah, I would assume.
The one you built two years ago.
Yeah.
It's an older map.
Yes, I assume that's correct. We apologize if that is noted as such, but from what you're describing, I would assume that is, in fact, the new residence hall that was approved about a year, year and a half, two years ago by the commission, in the area of the quadrangle.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I just wondered if we were getting a three-story dorm.
No.
We already have it.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other commissioners have any questions about this? I mean, fundamentally, the application is for a change in use from an infirmary to residential, you know, dormitory residential for students.
22 beds? Yes.
Okay. All right, seeing none and hearing none, I'll turn this over then to public comment. Ms. Harrigan, are there any members of the public that have signed up in the chat?
There are none that have, at this point, expressed an interest in speaking, if we want to just put out one more call to see if anyone would like to speak.
Yep. Any members of the public that would like to be heard on this item for 1073 Benson Road? This is your opportunity. If you don't speak now, we will close the public hearing. Okay, I don't hear anyone. I don't see anyone. There's no one in the chat, so I have to, there's no one that wishes to be heard here. So Attorney Fallon, I will, I'll close the public hearing on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good, thank you. Okay, and finally, we have our last public hearing, 1143 Sasko Hill Road, subdivision and subcoastal site plan application of 1143 Sasko Hill Road LLC for seven lots in the AAA zone. And I believe that.
Chairman? Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, well, you can.
Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Raymond Rizzi. I'm very excited to be here before you tonight with regard to this application at 1143 Sasko Hill Road. My name is Raymond Rizzi. I have an office at 10 Sasko Hill Road here in Fairfield, Connecticut. We are extremely excited. Our client is the contract purchaser of this property. This property has been kind of fallen into disrepair over the last five to seven years, and our client intends to create a fully conforming subdivision. We are before you without the nature or virtue, by virtue of any variances. We have done incredible neighborhood and community outreach with regard to this subdivision. And we come before you seeking a seven-lot subdivision and coastal site plan review. Chris Russo is on with me tonight. I asked that if he can just pull up the current survey of the property so that we can just take you through what's there, take you through what we propose, show how we can conform to all the regulations, and then, as we know, subject to, you know, consistent, a long-held Connecticut precedent, the commission in the subdivision application acts in their administrative capacity, and we believe that we, as your regulations state, if we satisfy all the your subdivision regulations, that this commission should grant this approval. Let me show you, this is the property. Everybody probably is familiar with this property. It's the end of Sasko, it's at the very end of Sasko Hill Road. It then also fronts on the, leading into the beach on Sasko, at the end of Sasko Hill Road. The property's about, a little over 20 acres. What's interesting, the property currently contains about literally four residences. There's the, as you can see in the upper-left-hand corner, there's a single-family home. Down below, toward the beach, you'll see another single-family home up on the road. You'll see the main residence, which is about halfway into the lot, which is a large single-family home that are, that has some beautiful architecture that our client is going to, has designed subdivision plans so that it can maintain that home. Just above that is a garage, believe it or not, that has a legal apartment in it. And then as you move toward the water, there is another, there is another single-family home. And then if you go down toward the water, what everybody probably sees is the most focal visual part of the property is a boat, is a brick boathouse that has been there, which has a kitchen and a bathroom. So basically, you have about five, five to six residences that currently exist on the property. Our client is looking to build seven single-family conforming homes. Chris, if we can, oh, I also want to point out to you, there is a about a six-acre conservation easement that's been there since the 90s with the Aspetuck Land Trust. We have been in constant communication with them. I would believe you've received a letter from their attorney, Joel Green, who is, will support this application. And David Brand is also here, hopeful, who is the executive director, who will also state that he, that they have, in fact, reviewed everything, and they're happy to see that this plan that we're going to submit to you tonight is consistent and serves to ensure all the protections that this easement is granted. If we can, Chris, if we can go to our actual subdivision plan. So maybe we can get it a little better size. So as you can see, what we are proposing is a private road that comes off Sasko Hill Road. The commission has the authority to grant a private road, and this is in a AAA zone, which is a two-acre zone, provided they could show that there is no linkage that would be required. In other words, could this road possibly link into into any other road that would prevent future development of the property? Is there any other reason in public interest that this would serve to make this a public road? This is going to be basically a 30-foot-wide proposed private road. The road will have a cul-de-sac. It's been reviewed by all the departments. It's, its construction has been approved by the departments. It's been reviewed by police and also by the fire department, and there's been no negative comments with regard to this implementation. One of the great things about this road is that it will not require any maintenance, replacement, snow removal, any kind of responsibilities of the town. So these seven lots will be, the road will be deeded to an association. The association and the seven homeowners will be responsible for all maintenance, all repair, and all replacement of this road. So this will, this subdivision will have absolutely no impact on the town with regard to the road. Sasko Hill Neighborhood Association, we've also talked about. Attorney Green represented them, and he includes in his letter that was sent to you tonight that we support this application. I think they were also very, people wanted to see this as a private road. They don't want to turn this into somewhere where you have a large cul-de-sac and people just hanging out at the end of a cul-de-sac, so. We believe that this serves all the purposes of a private road, which you have the authority to approve under your subdivision regulations. So the other thing is this, so your private road, the other thing is this property is under Section 2.1.14 of your subdivision regulation. Basically states that the commission may classify a street as private road where conditions of the land to be subdivided and join neighborhood make a private street especially appropriate. The pro street will provide only traffic service as a local street, will not be essential link. Clearly, we think we satisfy the requirements of 21.1.4 with regard to this application. This property has received wetlands approval. There's a small, there's a small wetlands section down in the very, let's call it the, call it the southern or the bottom area adjoining Long Island. As you can see, it's all within the protected area. Our clients received approval by the Wetlands Commission on June 8, 2021. Property will also be served by municipal, the sanitary sewer system. The, as you know, the sewers have been extended all the way up to the Country Club of Fairfield. Our client, on April 21, was granted approval by the WPCA to extend the sewers to this property. The properties currently, all the properties, all those residents are currently served by septic. They will now be served by city sewer. Our client will pay the expense of extending the sewer from the Country Club of Fairfield, basically in front of the Country Club of Fairfield. The nice thing about that, there's also, I think, I believe, eight or nine residences along that thoroughfare that will have the ability to connect to those sewers and also get off their septic system. So all of that is good for the environment. It's good for the town. It will provide additional revenue with regard to hookup fees. And for all those reasons, we think this is an excellent idea and a good reason to extend the sewers to this property. Additionally, the property will be served by a public water supply. This project, these seven lots have been through all the departments. The drainage reports have been reviewed. The engineering plans have been reviewed, and I believe there's a letter in your in your files dated July 2 from Laura Pulli that stated that she has reviewed all the plans, that she, that all the plans have been revised to reflect her comments, and that she has no concerns with regard to this application. And in fact, that the system, stormwater detention system, provides stormwater attenuation for the two-through-100-year storm events. In addition, the applicant has incorporated green infrastructure in the form of biofiltration swales into the design. Additionally, what we're doing, as you can see in a crosshacks section along Sasko Hill Road, Sasko Hill Road is by nature not wide enough to support what would typically be, uh, uh, city-taking, which would be a fifty-foot road. That crosshatch section along Sasko Hill Road will be dedicated to the town if the town ever decides to, um, it, to, uh, increase the width of Sasko Hill Road. Laura, in her comments, says with regard to the dedication of the land of creating a fifty-foot public right-of-way, the parcel should be deeded to the town of Fairfield for future highway purposes, which we will agree to do as a condition of approval. At this time, the commission should accept the parcel with no requirements of road widening or remove the stone wall from the new public right-of-way. The town has no plans to widen Sasko Hill Road since the roadway will not be widened. There is no need to relocate or remove the stone wall. Uh, one of the things that felt important from the Sasko Hill Road Association and in talking Attorney Green was there were concerns of this widening. You just had more people parking along Sasko Hill Road. People without beach permits would be parking there. Um, there would be issues with regard to additional safety issues, overuse issues, police enforcement issues. So the road will stay the way it is, although the town, if, in the future, if they decide that they would like to see it widened, there will be the ability to do that because that portion of the road will be dedicated to the town, and as I said, we'll agree to that as a condition of approval. Let me tell you about the lots. The lots, like I said, we, we have, uh, all the lots are over two acres. All the lots have the required two-hundred-foot square. They all have the required frontage on our private road or on Sasko Hill Road. Additionally, we are going to be donating about two acres of open space. Um, you can see those. There is the, um, this, let's call it the portion next to Sasko Hill Road, which is all, all of this open space will, will be, will be within the easement area. It's part of our coastal application. I'll talk about that a little more uh, as we talk, when we move into the coastal section of this. But you can see that we will be, that, that part of the property that is, as you can see, the dotted and then crosshatched, um, which is about one-point-four acres will be open, one-point-five-three acres will be open space. And then there's a second section up, um, which is about, um, I believe it's one, it's about point-four-eight acres up along what will be the proposed lot three. This is a very important section. This, this is one of the only sections in Fairfield. It actually is the only section in Fairfield where they have natural bluffs. And the reason natural bluffs are important is for the environment. There's a certain type of bird that, that lives in these bluffs, and it's called the bark swallow. So the bark swallow, or the bank swallow, I apologize, um, is, uh, resides in these bluffs. It's a very, very, very active natural, um, habitat, and we, we, with, in connection with our expansion of our easement area and additional enhancements that we've agreed to with the Aspetuck Land Trust, it will continue to serve in its natural habitat. One of the things we're not proposing, and one of the things that we've, we've had to talk with neighbors that, that there will be no public access. What happens is the whole area has, has a natural bird habitat. There is, believe it or not, public access in front of the property on low tide. Basically, you can walk the entire length of the property, um, the entire length of the shoreline, uh, in front of the property between where the water touches and where our property commences. For a number of reasons, I think we discussed this when we did the open space referral back. I think we approved, this commission approved us, uh, our open space plan or recommended approve our open space plan back in April, on April twenty-seventh at a hearing where we discussed the fact that we, that there, this natural habitat is so important that with the amount of birds that are there, that, that have people tramping through this, this, you know, this nice plains land, um, and this area where the birds are would cause probably more destruction to the natural habitat, and there would not be anything gained by that. This, the town, the environmental, uh, Energy and Environmental Protection Agency for, uh, uh, the state has reviewed this and basically agreed that if the commission thought that, 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 um, public access wouldn't, even though it would be, it's usually important, water from properties, if they felt that preserving the natural habitat was more important, they would, they would be okay with not allowing, uh, public access to this site. So what you can see is we have seven lots off a private road. Lots one, two, and three, well, lot one is two-point-oh-two acres. Um, lot two, which will preserve the natural, would preserve the existing home, is two-point-five-two acres. The home will remain in place, um, and it will have, yeah, obviously, new access, uh, as far as driveways, which will be laid out uh, when any kind of building permit comes forth. Additionally, there will be a, um, the, the house that, um, that on lot three will come down, and new homes will be built, a new home will be, uh, built on lot three. Lot four, where the boathouse is, will remain intact. There is also additional drainage that hand, there, as you can see, there is a system on, just above the protected area, that will handle all the, uh, drainage coming off the road. As I said, that has been looked at and approved by Laura. These lots are all down below, are all in excess of lots four, five, six, and seven are all in excess of two acres. They all have the required frontage. Um, as you know, the pool will be removed, the pool house will be removed, and the tennis court will be removed and replaced with existing houses. On lot seven, the guest house that is currently there will also, will also be removed in the future. Um, so what we plan on seeing is this property, which has become delinquent, which has become downtrodden, has the ability to have life energized into it. Um, the seven lots will be accessed off a public, a private road, so there won't be any big natural change to the appearance um, as, as you, as you view the property from Sasko Hill Road. Um, I, I can keep going, or we can, I can, if there's any questions the commission will have with regard to subdivision, it's, it's, it's been through the WPCA, it's been approved by Wetlands. This commission has already reviewed our open space plan, which we would like to have you adopt today. The open space plan, I think you referred to and, and recommended that this would be, this would be, uh, maintained by the association like the private road. Um,
Yeah, I, I think it would be helpful. I think it would be helpful if you provided a brief overview of the aspect of dedication of the open space as part of the subdivision application. I mean, I, I, you, you've, you've hinted a number of times at, uh, you know, the earlier application, but that was a, um, you know, presentation for us to make a recommendation back to you. And, and, and the plan, the plan is now incorporated into, into this application, but I think for purposes of the public hearing, um, and the, you know, any participation from the public, I think it would be, uh, appropriate for you to just briefly summarize the open space dedication plan.
Right. So what will happen is this open space plan, as you can see, uh, let's, let's call it the, it will, it will be technically the western portion of the property, um, which is along Sasko Hill, uh, well, starts along Sasko Hill Road, will be one-point-five-three acres. No, this area will not be disturbed. This area will be ma- you know, dead, uh, this area will be kicked its plain-like look. The, um, bird habitat will be maintained by the association. There's bird nests there. There are bird feeders there, and the property will remain in its natural, natural, uh, course. Um, there's additional area that's protected, which you can see in light gray above the crosshatch area, which is all subject to the Aspetuck Land Trust, which has also been further enhanced with regard to the amount of lawn that can be maintained, the natural habitat that can be maintained there. And, and actually, we, um, we agreed to additional restrictions with the Aspetuck Land Trust with regard to any kind of structures or activities that can happen up from the open space. But as, I think, Chairman, you've even pointed out previously, that's, I'm not going to get into the eat, that, that conservation easement is that is a, an agreement between two parties, and I think either, uh, hopefully have Mr. Green's letter, or Mr. Brandt can dis- discuss how we've come to an accommodation to make sure that the Aspetuck Land Trust and the, um, the, uh, purposes of this very important conservation easement have been maintained and enhanced in an agreement between the two parties. So that first portion of the property will be taken care of by the association. They have to maintain it. There will be no cost to the town. This open space will be mo- most importantly, left open, left uncompromised. And then to the south, which would be, or to the east of it, up, it, up on lot number three, there will be an additional open space portion, which will be a half an acre. That is that bluff area which I talked about before. One of the other reasons we didn't want to have any open, uh, any, um, public a- access on these is this property and this sections are cliff-like. There are, there are huge rocks. It is a very dangerous property to traverse, to go up onto the property, and there's really nothing to be gained by going up there. Well, in, in our discussions with the land trust, it was important to see that this be kept in its natural habitat, and that people don't litter, people don't have access to it, people don't have the right ability to trample over these grasses and meadows that have formed over the years. Yet by re- by, by not allowing any structures to be built within these open spaces, it'll preserve the view from the water so that this will have the, the look of a of the, of the beautiful shoreline that the, the, uh, former owner would, would like to, wanted to preserve. And, uh, we believe we've come to that, that, that determination. Is that? Would you like me to go any further?
No, I think that's, uh, that's, that's sufficient. Thank you very much.
Okay. So one of the things that I rule out is we kind of get into the coastal, uh, uh, that, and, and the commissioner kind of breaking this into two, two, two portions of the application. One is the subdivision application. I think I took you through all the approvals that we've already required that were necessary. We've, we've had it all reviewed and approved by all the departments. The drainage has been approved. Uh, Mike Bertola is on here tonight. If you have any questions about any of the engineering issues, which Laura Pulley has already addressed. And with regard to the seven lot subdivision, we conform to all your regulations. I try to keep it simple, and with regard to that, that we would request that that portion of the application be approved because it conforms with each and all of your regulations. I'd be happy to address any questions the commission may have with regard to the seven lot subdivision and the private road if they have, and then I'll move into the coastal plan uh, secondarily, but I think it's probably better to break the two up, uh, while we have our, our engineer here. If there's any questions the commission may have as relates to the subdivision.
No, that's, that's fine. And I think it's, uh, also, um, appropriate. Yeah, I will note that this is a subdivision application, and so all we need to see are the buildable squares on the, um, you know, the lots. Um, it's, it's, it, we're, we're not approving individual, uh, homes at this point. Um, although the, the, the meets and bounds of the road and the, you know, the cul-de-sac are, are, uh, properly, you know, under consideration right now. So, um, any questions from the commissioners, and maybe if you could stop screen sharing so that I could see, um, uh, you know, the proper videos, that'd be helpful. Thanks.
Uh, one question from Commissioner Francis?
Yeah, Commissioner Francis, then I see, uh, Commissioner Berman. Yep. Go ahead, Commissioner Francis.
Will this be gated?
I think the intent would be to gate it and keep it, and keep it private. Uh, there's not been a commitment on that. We certainly would, as, in a private road, have the right to do that. Um, I, I would, I would, I would think that would be something that would be of interest, and the association would determine. Um, so right now, there hasn't been a commitment on it. I think, I think what most likely will be gated.
And will the trash truck go into each of the seven homes?
That will all be by private arrangement, just as, as it is in many of the private roads in town. Yes. Yeah, nobody's going to have to cart their, we, the, the cul-de-sac's been designed to accommodate a, a garbage truck and accommodate emergency vehicles.
It's that large. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, well, the cul-de-sac, it needs to be built to spec, right? I mean, it's what, eighty feet in diameter? Um, you know, it has a, it, it accommodates turnaround for the largest fire truck and emergency vehicles. Um, I'm sure it's, uh, what, twenty feet? I, I, I didn't look, but it should be, uh, uh, twenty feet wide. Um.
Even if twenty feet wide, and then the cul-de-sac's got to have, that's all been through the fire department. Emergency access is all provided, and, uh, that, that would all be worked out with the, um, with, with the fire department.
Right, okay. Commissioner Berman. Now, you're on mute.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that I have, um, Laura Pulley's email, which I, uh, sounds like you, uh, described for the record. Um, so if I could, um, get that, I would, I'm probably, it might, might answer my question, but, but, as I understand, Ms. Pulley, uh, does recommend that, uh, you dedicate the, um, amount of, uh, street area that will be necessary to widen Sasko Hill Road to fifty feet. Uh, but she doesn't recommend that that actually be, uh, that there, there be any improvements in that regard at this time, because uh, in her view, the town has no intention of widening that street at this time. The, uh, subdivision regulation does set a presumption, um, that you need, uh, fifty feet, uh, in order to access a subdivision, and it says that we have our, uh, discretion to waive that requirement. So, uh, my question, I guess, uh, which is informed by Ms. Pulley's, uh, recommendation is, uh, why should we depart from the presumption that we need, uh, fifty feet, uh, of street, uh, width in order to access a sub- subdivision, say, of this size?
Well, one of the issue, one of the issues was going to be, was a major concern of, and Jo- Joel's not with us tonight, but, um, we discussed with the Sasko Hill Neighborhood Association, a lot of the people did not want it widened for the, first of all, increased speed of traffic. I think they feel it maintains the, the character of that entryway down to Sasko Hill Road. Secondly, in widening it, will people, will park or, um, possibly use that, use that area that, you know, um, the town really didn't want to change the character, have that beautiful stone wall taken down that kind of lines the entryway into the, into the, into, uh, into the beach area. And yet they have the right down the road, should for any special reason, the town would have the right to widen it themselves. But right now, uh, with Laura and talking with the departments, they, 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 they did not feel that removal of the stone wall is something that, that, that wanted, they wanted to pursue, us to pursue or to the town to pursue it this time.
Obviously, we know that Sasko Hill Road is a, a narrow road, and, and has that sort of, uh, narrow, uh, road, uh, character, and, and the, the area is obviously, uh, very, very unique and beautiful one. Um, eh, there are going to be now, you know, seven families, uh, you, you going in and out of this area, uh, you know, under the proposal, as opposed to, you know, at most one, right? So is it your position that, um, the, the town's right, you know, if, if the town reserves the right to widen the street in the future, um, that, that, uh, is going to adequately address any, uh, any potential traffic or congestion issue? Um, because I, I see that the subdivision re- regs don't require you to do a traffic study for a subdivision of less than ten units.
Well, remember, uh, Commissioner Berman, as I, as I, as I walked you through the current status of the property there, you have one major home that already exists. You have two smaller homes that could be, that are, that, that are rental properties that are not currently being rented because the owner didn't wish to do it. You actually have three prop- three homes. And then you have a boathouse, and you have a legal apartment over a garage. So right now, you have basically five residences on this property. We are going to increase that to seven. Um, and that's it. So we don't see, uh, with, uh, any major change um, as far as, you know, the density of, uh, the residents on the site. Those, there's the two homes that both sit on Sasko Hill Road. There's a home that sits closer to, to, um, to the, uh, uh, what, uh, what will be the new lot three. And then there's the garage with the second-floor apartment in the main home. So you really have five residences on the property now. It's one of these unique kind of manners that had been developed over the years. Um, and now what we're going to do is have, we believe, I, I don't think there's going to be any traffic issue at all. I mean, seven, when you think about the amount of people that access the beach daily or on the weekend, uh, seven cars with people now who can walk to that beach, um, uh, I don't think it's going to have any negative impact on the traffic, and certainly the police department didn't chime in that that was an issue at all. Because I don't, I, I hope that it helps you get through. I don't, I don't see any big change in that. Yes, you probably have bigger homes. Just because you have bigger homes up the, as we all know, it doesn't mean that you're going to have more people living in them, but, um, you're going to have, you know, six new homes, um, replacing, you know, four, four homes that currently exist, four, four re- four additional residences that are already there.
Okay, and, and I guess the last question on this is that, um, are you gonna, um, you're going to have to come back for, to us for our site plan approval for any of the homes, or is there going to be any other opportunity for us to look at the, um, the, the sightlines exiting the private road onto Sasko Hill Road? That just occurred to me while, as we were speaking. I think you've adequately addr- addressed my questions about the, you know, the, the lack of a need to widen the street at this point?
Yeah, I, I, what will happen is, um, unless, I don't, I, we all, we fit our two-hundred-foot squares. I mean, um, there would be no reason that once this subdivision approved, there'll be seven lots. I mean, there would be no reason that once this subdivision approved, there'll be seven lots like any other lot around town that'll be building lots, that as long as somebody can build within the setback lines, there is, there would be no, no need, no need to come back to you. They may, they would may, they would, they would may have to come back. They would have to come back for new construction within the coastal area management area, but that would be a different level of review for you. So you would judge it in connection with its impact on Long Island Sound versus the sightlines, which have already been removed, reviewed by your town engineer.
Makes sense.
Right. And the sightlines, we're not talking about sightlines because it's an existing driveway, right? That is being turned into this private road. So this, this curb cut, if you will, has long since existed. They're not, you're not changing any of the meets and bounds of that.
Yep. Right. It'll probably, yeah, it'll be, it'll, it'll be widened a little bit, I think, at the, at the, at the street, at the street level where it meets Sasko Hill Road, but there's not going to be, you know, anything, any, the location of where the entry and exit to Sasko Hill Road is as it has been historically there for probably 50 to 75 years.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any other questions for Attorney Rizzio, Commissioner Ron?
Can you just tell me the stone walls, the historic stone walls that we're talking about, but you don't want to remove, where are they located on Sasko Hill Road in relation to the existing driveway?
They run parallel along Sasko Hill Road. I think, Chris, you have a picture of them maybe? If not, we can just, you can see the crosshatched area. The boulder along the road, where, where the crosshatch area meets what you see as Sasko Hill Road, those, those little, that stone wall.
So the entryway is staying the same. It's just that you're moving, there's a sort of a Y-shaped sideways two-pronged driveway that exists now. You're, you're basically putting it more towards the middle of the whole parcel. You're getting rid of the northern driveway and the southern driveway.
Exactly. So the, the two arms that extend out right now will disappear. And there'll actually be, there'll be driveways entering the lots from the proposed.
And I just wanted to thank you for providing the wetlands entire permit approval because it, it shows me that you're pretty much staying outside of even the regulated, the 144-foot regulated area with the new construction as well, just as much as it was before anyway, maybe more because part of the driveway, I think, went into it before.
I will tell you, I've been done this for 30 years. This is probably one of the biggest outreaches that we've had. We've had Aspetuck Land Trust involved with this through day one. We've had Sasko Hill Neighborhood Association through Joel Green from the beginning of this application process. We've talked to, there are three neighbors, Chris, you have an overlay. There are three basically what would be considered classically agreed neighbors, meaning a butters are within 100 feet. Chris, if you can pull up an overhead view on that. And we have letters that have been submitted to your commission from those three neighbors. The first neighbor would be Mr. Rosania, who resides at 1078 Sasko Hill Road. That's the house that is on the corner of Sasko Hill Road and, and the country called Fairfield, basically. Then the property to the north, which is 1095 Sasko Hill Road, is owned by the Russells. The Russells also support this application. And then the property at 1131 Sasko Hill Road is owned by Mr. Samson, 1131 Sasko Hill Road LLC. There's a letter from Josh Samson on record. His property runs the entire length of our eastern border. And he has written a letter supporting the application and the, the open space plan that has been proposed. So this has been, there's been a, our client has been very sensitive to the importance of this property. And although it's a seven lot subdivision, doesn't, you know, that, that kind of is just the same as any other, any other subdivision in town. It's, he's sensitive to the neighbors, sensitive to the community and sensitive to the environmental impact that this, this property has and the visual impact this property has for anyone who's out on the harbor. And it, it's really been a pleasure to work on this application and with an applicant who, who, who's not just trying to jam something down somebody's throat, but basically coming with a great plan that he's incorporated everybody else's concerns.
Great. Mr. Corcoran?
For Attorney Rizzio, I, I just read these three letters from the neighbors and they're pretty much the same. And I'm not sure you want to keep them the way they are because there's, appears to be a misprint in them. It says that the development permitted would forever change the undeveloped character of the open space. I think it's just a misprint, but I don't think that's what we want in the record.
A hundred percent. We can get that, we can have that reflected. I, I think the intention, if you could read, if you read the whole letter, it, it talk, it, it does, it, it's, it's probably just a typograph layer. I apologize.
Yeah, it's in all three letters.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Corcoran. Any other commissioners have any other questions for Attorney Rizzio? Okay. Very good. Thank you, Attorney Rizzio.
Right. If you want, I'll just do a quick review now of the coastal plan.
Yep.
As you know, we're, we're required to, because it come before you on the subdivision or change in the use of this property for coastal area approval under section 22A-90. I believe you received on July 13th today, there's a letter from Mary Beth Hart with regard to the state's review of this coastal plan. We believe that this, in our opinion, in order to prove this, we have to show that there is no negative impact on any, on any coastal resources, which we do not believe. In fact, this application is going to preserve many coastal resources. She talks about that there is, that it's not, we're not providing a water dependent use, but she does not believe this is a suitable waterfront site nor neither do we. So there's no reason for a water dependent use to come here. However, we do preserve the right to add one additional dock. She does mention in her letter, and we would agree to these two conditions of approval. As she said, if the commission felt the natural, preserving the natural habitat was more important than public access, she certainly said the commission could grant that, but she would like to see two conditions of approval. Number one, the commission, she says on the second page of her letter, the commission should require, as a condition of coastal site plan approval, that no additional docks or other structures be allowed in the entire conservation area outside of lot number four. So other than lot number four, we will be, will be the only lot that a, in effect, a, a dock, a dock will be constructed. Further, she says, as second approval, no structures as fences or walls should be allowed on either side of the property that would obstruct public access below the mean high watermark from adjacent properties. We would agree to both those conditions of approval. They're not, they're also bootstrapped by our open space plan and our conservation easement with the Aspetuck Land Trust. So we have no, no problem accepting those conditions of approval as stated in section in the first paragraph on the second page of Mary Beth Hart's letter to this commission.
As, as incorporated into the plan, right? As incorporated into your existing dedication of open space?
Hundred percent.
Yeah.
And we believe we satisfy all the coastal area mandates. We, as I said, it's not a water dependent property. It's inappropriate for water dependent uses. However, it's not inconsistent with the coastal area goals. And it, it does not present any adverse impacts to any coastal resources. For all those reasons, we would respectfully request this commission grant our coastal application as it is consistent with the review as provided by the state of Connecticut.
Great. Any commissioners have any questions about the coastal area management plan? Okay. Seeing none, I have none. I think that, I think that about wraps it up. Okay, Attorney Rizzio? Very good.
Commissioner, thank you.
Very good. So we'll turn it over to public comment now on this application. Ms. Harrigan, do we have anyone signed up in the chat?
I, I don't see anyone requesting to speak. And there are a couple of unidentified callers, so I don't know if we want to just go ahead and, and make that known that if folks want to speak, they should speak up.
Exactly. Now, now is the opportunity.
Well, I think if you'll note, David Grant from Aspetuck Land Trust, I know it was my understanding from Joel Green that he would be speaking on behalf of Aspetuck Land Trust. And I can see he's on the call, so you might need to unmute him.
Okay. Yep, we're going to call right now for, for other members of the public to, to speak here, including if those people who submitted letters want to. Although I will say that, you know, for our purposes, submitting a letter is, you know, equally as good as speaking live, you know, at the public hearing. So we do have those in, in the record. And I confirm that we all do now, as Commissioner Corcoran's comments showed. Thank you, Ms. Harrigan. So I'll put it out there and call for any members of the public, including Mr. Brandt, Aspetuck Land Trust. If you'd like to be heard, please let us know. Okay. I'm not hearing anything. I do note that Mr. Brandt is still muted and his video is off. Now, okay. All right.
I think he's, he's just show, I think he's.
Hello, everybody. I'm David Brandt from Aspetuck Land Trust. And since I'm here, I might as well say a few words. But I will say that, you know, we're, we're actually quite excited that the property owner has decided to plant significant amount of native habitat in this coastal area. You know, the current easement allows for the expansion of the boathouse, for construction of the swimming pool, a helipad. I know, you know, the private conservation easement is not really your concern. It also allows for a large lawn area to be maintained over that whole 6.4 acres. So from our perspective as a land trust, that's interested in providing habitat for wildlife, you know, large lawns, any lawn really is a kind of biological dead zone. And we're really excited that the coastal habitat in this conservation easement, the, the 6.4 acres is going to be improved through the planting of native plants. From our perspective, this really supercharges the ecosystem services that the land provides, especially for those coastal, the coastal birds, the migratory birds. And, you know, the conservation easement, as it stands, does not allow for public access. And we're perfectly fine with the open space area, you know, being set aside, not allow for public access as well, especially since there's a beach right nearby and people can walk along the shore. But we feel that this coastal habitat is in really short supply. And it's very, very important for migratory birds that they actually have a place to land and feed, you know, on their journey. So we're quite excited about that. And it does align with our Green Corridor initiative where we are really trying to involve thousands of homeowners to build, build more biodiversity, you know, in their yards and take those action steps to be part of a conservation solution in our community. And quite frankly, because of, you know, the property's location and its size, you know, this really is a unique opportunity for us to showcase this kind of native habitat. So from our perspective, we're really excited and very pleased that the homeowner is doing this. You know, on the actual easement area on this land. So, thank you.
Terrific. Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Any other members of the public wish to be heard? We didn't hear anybody. We didn't see anybody online. Okay. I'm not hearing anybody. Attorney Rizzio?
I just, I just want to clear one thing for Commissioner Corcoran because I, I just, we had these three letters. I know these people spent the time in reviewing them and everything else. And I think Commissioner Corcoran, what, what the, what the people intended to say, they talked about the, I'm just going to read this quick paragraph so you understand that, that there really isn't a typo there. It just has to be taken, was taken out of context. What all the letters say, the proposed open space is one of the most pristine and undeveloped stretches of Fairfield's coastline. While the existing conservation restrictions provide some restrictions on development, I know it still allows for development within its bounds. While the owner of the property may not be able to build a house within this area, so the current conservation restriction permits the installation of swimming pool, helipad, lawn gardens or other development permitted under the conservation restriction would still forever change the undeveloped character of the open space. So I think what they were trying to say was not that, there wasn't a typo there. What they were just saying is these enhanced restrictions that we're proposing, eliminating a helipad and swimming pools within that Aspetuck Land Trust area prevent the changing of that area. So these, it's really actually is a consistent letter. I just wanted to point that out to you. I think it might've been worded a little better, but what they were trying to show was these enhanced restrictions that we're putting on with the Aspetuck Land Trust will, will ensure that this undeveloped character doesn't change, where, where it could have happened without these, without these enhancements. So I just wanted to put that on the.
That's, that, that's very helpful to explain the, the language and, you know, put it into a better context. And so thank you, Commissioner Corcoran for raising it. And thank you, Attorney Rizzio for clarifying that.
You're welcome.
With that, I, I don't think that there's anything for you to rebut.
I'm used to that. Thank you.
All right. And I, it appears that is the, the end of our, our business on the agenda. And so unless anyone has anything further, I will close the public hearing on this item. And I will adjourn the meeting. All right?
Folks, thank you very much. Have a nice evening. Good night, everyone.